I'd like to call to order the City of Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education for April 28, 2015. Could I have a roll call vote, a roll call please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is the President's Report. And I wanted to focus on just a couple of things this evening. The first is gratitude for the opportunity to have served on this board and represent the citizens of Lake Forest for the last four years. As you know, public education in Lake Forest has existed for over 150 years, and it's been an honor to serve as a temporary steward of this important tradition of our community. I also want to thank my fellow board members. Each one of them, Jeff, Beth, Mike, Rob, Rick, and Leslie, have performed unbelievable amounts of work on behalf of the district. And whether it's here or in committee meetings or interacting with community members or any of the many other responsibilities which board members undertake, they've represented the best of what Lake Forest, public service, and the spirit of volunteerism which built this community are about. I'm grateful to them and for the opportunity to have worked with them. No board member I've known comes to this position with any agenda other than love for this community and its schools. It's the only reason that we are here. In my view, our board members' service is guided by the words of Emerson, who said, "The purpose of life is to be useful and honorable." The professionals who run our district, starting with Mike Simic, Lori, Lauren, Ann, Jen, Barry, and all the others, as well as our amazing teachers and principals, our incredible group of educators, they deserve the admiration of the community which this board represents. When I started as president two years ago, I said the board would focus on two areas: vision and oversight. And that's primarily what we've done. In terms of oversight, I'd like to once again thank Rick Schuler, head of the Finance and Operations Committee, Rob Lemke, head of the Compensation Committee, and Mike Borkowski, head of the Policy Committee. Our citizens should feel very good that such a qualified and hard-working group of board members devote so much effort to oversight of their school district. We also spent a great deal of time last year reaching out to all the constituencies of our district as part of developing an updated mission and vision. This effort, which was led by Beth Clemenson, has begun to make its way in a very meaningful way into our schools, and we owe thanks to Beth and Mike Simic and his team for this. I'd also like to thank Leslie Fisher for leading the Education Committee of the district for the past four years. Every major curriculum change and educational initiative is vetted and discussed at length in this committee, which ensures continued alignment between the district and the community. Leslie's performed an outstanding job representing the community and the board in this capacity. In addition, she has been a superb board vice president. Her knowledge of education as an educator herself, APT leader and board member, her ties to and understanding of our community, and her persistent positive nature have been a service to this board and community. Like all of us, I have a personal connection with our district, as my three children and my wife are all graduates. As a parent and now as a board member, I continue to be amazed by the transformation of our students during the period that they're enrolled here. Each year, a new crop of slightly wide-eyed kindergarteners enters Sheridan, Everett, or Cherokee, and it's a remarkable, remarkable moment. Over the next nine years, they grow from small children into young adults who are prepared to succeed at any high school in the world. Along the way, they make friends and develop social skills, learn how to be good citizens, begin to learn to deal with setbacks or failure, and start to master a myriad of other intangible things which go into leading a meaningful life. We shouldn't lose sight of this transformation that goes on every day in our district. At a recent board meeting, I mentioned this board through its actions can set a tone for how those in the district interact. Referencing a recent speech by Pope Francis, I said that if we as a board set a standard of kindness, respect, and collegiality in our dealings with each other and with district and community members, that it would go a long way toward building the sort of culture we all want in the district. This evening, I'd like to take that step one, this idea, one step further. I'd like to challenge the new board to build a culture of collaboration with the district and community. By this, I mean making a proactive effort to speak, listen, and interact with each other and everyone with whom we have contact in a way which always shows respect, empathy, gratitude, and appreciation. This doesn't mean board members shouldn't do their jobs or be persistent, but if we are to be effective, we must seek to better understand and honor the culture and values of the organization which we are charged with overseeing. That said, among the best advice I could give is to keep asking questions. As board members, it's one of the most powerful things you can do. I've never seen a school board get into trouble by asking too many questions. In general, when you observe school boards which run into problems, it's almost always because there weren't enough questions asked. In asking questions, often it pays to keep the perspective of a community member or outsider. One of the best services you can provide as a board member is to bring that perspective, since school districts and school boards, like any organizations, can be subject to blind spots or group think. Most importantly, keep the dialogue about education going in our community with everyone, especially those with whom you might disagree. As long as you keep talking, there's potential to find solutions to issues and problems which always arise. That isn't to say it's easy, but it's possible. At a 1981 commencement address at Stanford University, future Secretary of State Warren Christopher spoke on leading the negotiations to relieve, to release the 400 Americans held in Iran. The subject of his address was simply called, was simply "Keep Talking." I just wanted to read one section. He said, "Most talking isn't glamorous. Often, it's tedious. It can be excruciating and exhausting. But talking can also tame conflict, lift the human condition, and move us closer to the ideal of peace." So whether the subject is peace in the Middle East or in the Cherokee parking lot, always engage each other with respect and empathy. In another report, I noted this, a distinction between some mostly private schools, which were developed around a particular educational philosophy, and most public schools, which are not. I noted that this was both a challenge and an opportunity. It's an opportunity because the public school system can choose from the best of different educational philosophies to meet the needs of its students. It's a challenge because in practice, it's very difficult to know what the best educational approach is and for, for a community, and in many cases, even more difficult to actually implement the approach. And I said at the time, this was the reason the work done on the district's mission and vision was so important. After seeing the completion of the work and the way it's made its way into our school buildings, I feel much better about the ability of a shared vision of our community to take hold in our school district. In my view, our district is a beneficiary of a guiding spirit, which is a gift from our community and educators. The spirit is seen in the day-to-day work of our teachers, coaches, administrators, and board members who work so hard to support the district. It can be seen in the enthusiasm for the Cube or the new STEM Labs or inspiration blocks at our schools. It can be seen in the work of APT leaders, room moms, parents working on book drives or students working on the eighth grade class gift. The spirit which guides our district is as old as this community, but is also as young and full of potential as the kindergarteners who walk into one of our classrooms for the first time on a late summer day. It's a spirit that reinvents itself with each new class and is a continual reminder of the hope and potential which each succeeding generation brings to this community. Guided by that spirit and with the student stewardship of this board and our outstanding administrators and faculty, I know this district will continue to thrive, and its best moments will be in the years and decades to come. In doing so, our district will continue to fill its purpose, educating each new generation into mature, successful citizens who, to paraphrase Joseph Conrad, "Develop at a young age hearts which can hope, love, and trust in life." Thanks once again for the privilege of serving on this board. That concludes the President's Report. Thank you very much. I would now like to ask Leslie Fisher to make some comments on the occasion of her final board meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for your always thoughtful insights and kind words. I first want to commend the caucus on the exhaustive process they undertook in order to identify and secure incoming Board of Education members. I am grateful to Thompson, Kent, and Suzanne for sharing their time, talents, and wisdom with our district. I've had the opportunity throughout the past four years to work closely with various community members, parent leaders, building leaders, teachers, and other parents through Education Committee, Curriculum Coordinating Committee, APT, Spirit, and LASIC. I have learned much from these experiences and have become increasingly aware of the power of collaboration. To our administration, many thanks. To Jen and Alan, we are fortunate to have your financial acumen and expertise. The lengths you regularly go through to study trends and analyze data have helped us to remain in strong financial health. To Lori and Lauren and Susan, your enthusiasm for learning, true engagement and growth, is contagious to building leaders, teachers, and students. I speak your language. Lauren, while we are sad to see you leave, you have helped to lay a strong foundation that will continue to be built upon. To Eileen and Ann, you do more for the culture of this building than you can ever possibly know. I was always glad to work alongside both of you. To Mike Simic, if one of the most important responsibilities of a Board of Education member is that of hiring a superintendent, I feel very confident that my job has been well done. Your vision for our district, your passion for creating curiosity in our children, and your steadfast determination to reach and grow every single student are evident and noble. To Mike, Beth, Jeff, and Rob, once the newbies, now the veterans, you are poised to help lead our district as we refine initiatives and continue to look on the horizon and oversee the important work at hand. Mike, thank you for all you have done thus far, especially as it relates to our relationships with NSSED. Beth, thank you, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, for leading us through the mission and vision process. To Rob, for being a very, very big part of the Compensation Committee in increasing new initiatives here, and to Jeff for overseeing the Policy Committee and working on very important matters. To Rick and Bill, who I will refer to as the Class of 2011, you will both always hold a special place in my heart. Together with Julia, John, Jeff, and Lori, we weathered storms and transitioned to new administration. As we acclimated, we accepted leadership positions and forged productive relationships with newer Board of Ed members. Rick, your leadership on the Finance Committee and throughout negotiations has helped provide us with clarity and confidence. As our president, Bill, you have offered so much in your time and thoughtfulness. I will miss not only your monthly president reports, but I will miss the camaraderie that you and I have developed. I have learned much from you. Finally, I'd like to thank the community. As school board members, we are entrusted with what may very well be our greatest resource: our children, our future. While not always easy and certainly not simple, it has been an honor and a responsibility I have taken very seriously and have thoroughly enjoyed. I want to end on one final note. Four years ago, having recently been appointed as a Board of Education member and the Education Committee Chair, I received a call from then-Supervisor Dr. Griffith. He called me to discuss an idea he was very excited about. The teachers, students, and administrators had identified a perfect spot in the DPM East Building. This spot was going to be called the Cube, C3. It was going to be all about creativity, communication, and collaboration. Much as Mr. Anderson pointed out when he spoke just a few moments ago, these three key items are an integral part of continuing the success of where we have come and to be successful and where we will go. The communication that we mirror as adults, whether board members, administrators, teacher leaders, goes down to, all the way to our students. The same with the creativity we use to problem-solve and to innovate. And finally, collaboration is the key. Working together will ensure that we get to where we need to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. I want to ask our other retiring board member, Rick Schuler, to make some comments.
Thank you very much, Bill. Three topics I just want to touch on and leave the other board members with. First, I'll start with the mundane, which is finance and operations, and I feel compelled to do so because I've been head of the Operations and Finance Committee for the last couple of years. I seriously want to leave everybody with the understanding that Alan and Jennifer are on top of everything, doing a fantastic job from, the results are positive annual cash flow continuing. When cash flow is going to be negative, they allowed for it, they budgeted, we changed our operations accordingly, no surprises. You don't want surprises. We have not been getting surprises, and with their attention to detail and budgeting, I think we're in good shape. Cash flow is positive, reserves are plentiful, and well-monitored. When I say this, though, we can't take it for granted. We haven't taken it for granted in the past. If they were to fail, if we had negative reserves or declining reserves or poor cash flow, everything else suffers. And that, this is, you know, not the exciting part, but everything beyond it suffers if this isn't handled well. So we can't take our eye off the ball going forward as well as things are going at this time. In that vein, I'll leave you with what I call Rick's Rule of Value. You've heard me use the word value. It's not how much we spend, it's not how little we spend. You can spend a lot and have good value, you can spend a little and have good value, but you can have, spend a lot and have poor value, or you can spend a little and have poor value. It really comes down to that, and I urge everybody to keep an eye on that. More interesting, my second point, it's a little esoteric, but I ask everybody to continue to ask one driving question or driving force that should be involved in decision-making across the board, and that's what's best for the kids. Whether it be mission, vision, goals, curriculum, calendar planning, one of my pet peeves that you'll be glad to not hear about anymore, especially Mike, hiring and moving of personnel, spending and operations, if the first and underlying question is what's best for the kids, it seems to sort of take care of everything from there. It's almost like, and Rob will laugh or think I'm nuts, but it's like the invisible hand of capitalist economics whereby if you ask, "How do I make the most profit?", it tends to lead to everything else following and working out. In this situation, if we ask what's best for the kids, and that's the driving force, everything else will be okay and fall into place. And the last thing I'd like to end with is I would also like to thank all of my fellow board members. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you. I love you all. I'll miss you all. It's fun working with you. Special thanks to Bill for being president. It's a, it's a lot of work for all our board members, extra workload for Bill, and if nothing else, I'll really miss your president's reports because they're always very entertaining, and I often wonder, "Where do you come up with some of these things?!" But they're a lot of fun. But we also remember, this isn't about the board members. I thank you all, but it's not about us as individual board members. We come, we go. There have been board members before us for eons that have come and gone. It's really, as Bill referred to and Leslie referred to, it's the spirit of our community, it's the spirit of our kids. It rolls on with or without us, and I'm confident it will continue to do so. Thank you, Mike, as well.
Thank you very much, Rick. And that concludes the President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I can't think of no more fitting tribute to the Class of 2011 and the invisible hand of what's good for kids and in the honor of all seven board members, but most particularly those who are stepping down, Bill and Leslie and Rick, and reporting on the really good things that are happening in the district. And this invisible hand that you talk about is very much the case with, with the board, and I think you'll see that in, in the comments here tonight. Tonight, we have two presentations updating the board and the community on important initiatives in the district. First of those is the CSCI survey, which establishes a baseline of social and emotional wellness from a student, staff, and parental perspective. In our mission and vision work last year, all three of these groups, our parents, our staff, and our parents, echoed the same concern: Do not lose sight or momentum of the social, emotional well-being of our students. And your, and the board packet this, this month is a very substantial amount of information about that CSCI survey, and Dr. Wymer will be summarizing some of that for us here briefly. The second presentation is on technology use in our district. And Lake Forest was at the forefront of utilizing technology to expand learning opportunities for students, and as our district milestone instruction makes clear, the drive is for more differentiated, more inquiry-based, and ever-more student-focused and more student-led learning. On both the achievement and the instruction fronts, I'm happy to thank our parents for their strong attendance last night at our math meeting. We had a very good showing of parents, which showcased the hard work, the three years in the making of our math teachers at DPM in making our curriculum more understandable to students and parents. And a special thanks go to Susan Milks, our High School Department Chair, Joe Obricki, Lori Wilcox, and Lauren Fagel for their considerable work leading to this meeting. Some of the key takeaways from that meeting are worth mentioning. There is a focus on labeling courses and not students. Classes will be titled what they are and what the students will learn. There is a focus on course sequence rather than tracks of students. So there is a sequence that kids can follow, and then they can shift those, that sequence, in ways that are called ladders, so students can climb into a different level of math if and when they're ready. The math sequences are established to challenge all students, every single student in the district, at whatever level they might be, and provide very challenging coursework for each of them. The work on math will make it far more possible for many more students to access higher-level math at the high school, and at the same time, have more age-appropriate math in the middle school. For some of our students, algebra for all in our middle school meant a march through year after year of algebra, beginning in seventh grade and often not ending until their junior year in high school. I also wanted to show a picture because there is one item of interest, ongoing interest, and it came up last night as well. And this is a report produced by our High School Department Chair, Joe Obricki, and there are two lines on the chart. The one line on the left shows the Illinois average. This is 2014 graduates. The other line is the national 75th percentile. These, by number, show what our ACT scores are in our district from our juniors that are taking the test. What's important about this from a District 67 perspective is that students take this in their sophomore or junior, sometimes their senior year. The overwhelming majority of that learning that the ACT reflects is done under the char, at the, under the direction of this school board. They're only in the high school for two years before they wind up, wind up taking this. So what you see here is that two-thirds of our high school students at Lake Forest High School are above the 75th percentile nationally, fully two-thirds. Now, our aim is to make this even better, but my point is that average in Lake Forest is really, really not average. And I particularly want to emphasize that there is not a prize for getting to calculus first. And while we want to challenge our students at every juncture, our parents need to recognize that their students need a four-year math sequence in high school, and that pushing their students through tutors and the like in their middle school years may affect their students' course selection and their well-being in high school. It bears pointing out that the ACT, which assesses college readiness, does not include math beyond trigonometry. That's something that many, many people don't know. So that means that pre-calc, calc, statistics, BC calc, multivariable calc, differential equations, and linear algebra add limited value to that very important metric. We believe that the majority of our students at the high school can be successful in getting to and through statistics and calculus. We also believe in leading balanced lives, pursuing interests in and out of school, and focusing on student readiness for their math sequence. Finally, I want to finish with a couple of words about our Cherokee principal search. We are done with our first round of our principal search. We've had eight interviews to date. On Friday, we will have four more, and this will be an interview committee composed of staff and also parents. Very happy to report that we have four really, really good candidates. And critical in that process is to never put anyone through to the process that the initial group doesn't think, you know, "This person can be a principal whether here or somewhere else." Really, really a very good thing to be able to report to the board. And with that, I'd like to thank Bill and Leslie and Rick again, because under their tutelage, these things that you see up here and the success in our math program and every other program, the focus on emotional wellness would not be what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simic. Next on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on a topic of their choosing, preferably related to education? But not necessary. Seeing none, we now move to reports and discussions. The comprehensive school climate inventory results. Ms. Wymer.
Good evening. I'm Ingrid Wymer, the Executive Director of Student Services, and I'll be doing a brief overview of the comprehensive school climate inventory that Mr. Simic referenced. We just finished the survey recently, and it is developed by the National School Climate Center, which is an organization that originated in the Teachers College at Columbia University in New York, and it's been in existence for about 10 years, and it shifted over from the university to a standalone nonprofit organization, and its mission is to help schools develop safe and supportive learning environments for students. And it defines school climate as follows: School climate is the quality of school life as it relates to norms, values, interpersonal relationships, social interactions, and organizational processes. So how does one go about measuring school climate? The originators of the survey, what they did was they did a meta-analysis on research that's out there that looked at what are key attributes that contribute to a positive school learning environment for students and staff? And what they did was they developed a series of questions where they gathered the perceptions of the main stakeholders within the school community. So that's our students in grades three through eight, our entire staff, and parents that participate in it. Our participation rate, the goal, is to get 85% or more of our staff and our students, which although there's a little bit of discrepancy between the middle school and the three elementaries, we were able to reach that goal. And with parents, although that looks somewhat low, there's, our goal is actually 30% or higher, with 40% being a really high lofty goal. So if you look at averaging those two, we were able to capture the parent population that we would have liked to see at a minimum for us to be able to identify meaningful trends. And we want to say thank you to parents for their participation in this. We had 542 parents fill out the survey, so we definitely appreciate that and consider it a high rate of return. You know, more is better, but this- You know, more is better, but this is enough for us to look into some shared perceptions and compare that against what our schoolteachers are reporting, and staff, and our students. The survey has twelve dimensions within it, and it's split into five categories. So there were a number of questions that they repeat themselves throughout the instrument to look for reliability within answers. And there's school safety, so it's the rules and norms, sense of physical security and social, emotional. And then under teaching and learning, we have what are our supportive instructional practices, and social and civic learning, and then interpersonal relationships, as you can see, is respect for diversity, and then social support. So what is the perception of teachers and adults in the school community helping and students, and then the student-to-student dynamic as well? And then institutional environment, how engaged are students feeling in the school community and that sense of belonging? And then physical surroundings, are, are, are our buildings in good shape, are, are they safe and cleanly? And then the staff section filled out two additional sections, series of questions about leadership, district and school-based leadership, as well as their professional staff-to-staff relationships. When you look at this chart vertically by stakeholder, by students, staff, and parents, if they, the survey company rank ordered, which dimensions were viewed as more favorably? That would be a one, or a two, or a three, which you can see in green. And then the ones in the light pink are less favorite, favorable. So you can see there's some patterns that emerge with some of the areas of strength that we have, and then the areas that are in the light pink. Even though when we rank something one to ten, you know, we have to have an eight, nine, or a ten, but if you relatively look at the normative data that is produced by the test company, our, some of our lower areas are definitely above the national average, above the norm average. So similar to what Mr. Simic was saying, with our ACT scores and with any, any time that we capture academic achievement, what might be perceived as a problem here is nationally, we're still above that mark. But in any case, the areas that do show up as concerns are definitely areas that we want to roll our sleeves up and look at, how can we improve this? How can we improve this? And what might we not be seeing as educators that the students are experiencing? And then, you know, there's also some wonderful cause for celebration with students feeling supported by adults in their environment and respecting diversity. And as we drill down into different sub-populations and by school, you know, a lot of nice areas of celebration that came through these results. And then areas and opportunities for us to grow and support our students. So moving forward, our faculty and staff, I co-presented with the principals at each of the schools, each school's specific data, information, and compared it to the district and also some of the norm samplings. So that has been done. We're creating some good discussion around the results. We'll be putting the full surveys in the schools for teacher teams, for our emotional wellness team, for our academic leaders, instructional leaders, and different committees are going to be looking at it. And then we're going to come together as a whole as well for an action plan moving forward. And school, students, and community, we will be posting the results on our website. We also will be sharing with our emotional wellness committee and our APTs, and creating some good discussion around that and the work that we're going to do moving forward, and incorporating an action plan to help our students in the areas that they have told us they need some more support. And what will, two avenues that we'll do is, we'll look at those positive results and look at, how can we protect and sustain the efforts that we're doing that yielded those positive results? And then the areas that weren't as positive, we're going to look at them and see what are some efforts that may inadvertently be undermining our efforts in that area, and where, what type of wraparound support can we provide? So we'll be doing a lot of concerted efforts in the next years, years to come, and we will be working on this. And the next time we get it, you know, we hope to move the needle on the areas where we need to. We need to, we hope to sustain or improve, sustain or enhance even the areas where we're doing really extremely well. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Weimer. And are there questions or comments from board members?
Ingrid, thank you very much for, for presenting it, and really thank you to the whole admin for doing the survey. I certainly found the, the, the results interesting, and as you said, there's some areas that are great and some areas that, that we can grow in. Obviously, the, across the board, the sense of social, emotional security came in the lowest on, for nearly every group. And just sort of for my own sanity check, I pulled the Illinois Youth Survey data, and it is relatively consistent with this. I'm, I'm not going to go through that whole hundred and fifty pages, but I'll just share the one, one item from the Illinois Youth Survey, bullying experiences during the past twelve months. The total percentage of students who reported at least one instance of bullying at school via any means during the past twelve months, this is for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, thirty-four percent, forty-two percent, and thirty-nine percent. So we do have a lot of tremendously good things going on, and we are certainly making efforts in that area. But I think the Illinois Youth Survey sort of agrees with this survey that, that is an area that we can work on, so. But thank you for doing this and, and not being afraid to tackle the issues. Thank you.
Yep. We definitely will. Any other?
I, I would echo what Mike said. I so appreciate, as I'm sure the other members do, not speaking for everyone, but the detailed representation of data here. Is, it's very clear to see, certainly like you said, Ingrid, what needs to be protected and what really needs to be focused on. And as we say, perhaps the sense of social, emotional security still is within the national norm. That's not okay for us. We want to rise above. At first, when I looked at the results, I thought, wow, I had never thought of a negative to losing the time and advisory at the middle school level with the extended learning opportunity, because I'm thrilled about the extended learning opportunity. However, if the idea that we have had this advisory time for many years and attempted to teach character education through it, maybe this is a great time for a change to embed it more in the regular curriculum. So I see this as a real opportunity, K through eight.
Yeah. That's, and that's exactly one of, one of the main things that we're looking at is, how do we present these opportunities throughout a student's day? So it's not just one defined piece, but we recognize that it can't just be implicit learning, it has to be explicit learning as well. We have to be sure that we have taught students expected behaviors and how to treat one another and, and, you know, create our respectful and safe atmosphere. And if we can do that throughout our curriculum and look at literature selections, and look at social studies units, and embedding it in science and math as well, that'll be tremendous. And that'll be, you know, send a strong message to our students that this is pervasive across our environment. There's non-negotiables, and, and we're, we're very serious about rolling our sleeves up and delving in and gaining a better understanding of what our students are telling us through the survey, and then looking at what are the areas that we need to improve the schoolwide system.
Glad to hear that.
That's a good point, that it should be ubiquitous throughout the whole system. All teachers should be pounding the same theme selectively where it makes sense and where there are examples. But could you also discuss where specifically it would be addressed for the improvement in the social, emotional wellness? What are the ideas for?
Well, so actually, prior to the survey results coming out, we had made a commitment to join a three-year cohort with NSSCD and engage in a really intensive process called Foundations that's put out by the Safe and Civil Schools. And it's not a program or curriculum, but it's a framework for understanding your system. And within that, we are, we have leadership teams at each building that will be looking at and working with this whole staff at each school, and looking at the framework of, what are our school-wide behavior expectations? Are, are we making sure that the adults in our school, school community are consistent in their responses and kind and nurturing through seeing discipline problems as an opportunity to build a child's skill set? And not punitive in nature, but more instructional? And then looking at also, are we, how are we doing with providing tiered services? Just like we have interventions for students that might struggle in reading or math, there's some students that might need more support and more guidance and more practice and more modeling with behaviors and social, emotional parameters. So we're looking with our psychologists and our social workers and our counselors and our teachers about how are we supporting those students? That what they're getting in the classroom may not be enough for them. They need more, just like any other intervention program that we have. So this project that we're embarking on will be a really deep, deep drill down into the whole framework that is the social, emotional bed that we rest upon, and it'll look at setting the tone for the teaching and learning that can occur at, at a high level.
I'm sorry, just one follow-up. Would, would that happen with programs after school? Would it happen during gym class, or?
So this would-
When would that happen?
So this is a, a whole framework for, we'll be looking at where, where are we teaching expected behaviors and where are we modeling that and making sure that it's secure? So it's across the whole school, that it's, it's when the student steps on our campus in the morning until they leave in the afternoon. That some opportunities will take place during our wellness curriculum on mental health and sociability. Some things will take place during our literature studies, when we're talking about character analysis or conflict that comes up. Some will happen as things arise in, in our larger areas, like, you know, lunch and, and recess for the younger kids. And so really looking at where can we have collective efforts where we're all pulling in the same direction? So it'll be a multitude of areas. It'll be some things that'll be addressed specifically in class, and then other things will be in the environments where things may happen with supervisors, and then also with assemblies. We have character assemblies, we have, we talk with our kids about caring, teamwork, respect, respo, rapport, honesty, and integrity, our core values. We'll be tying lessons into that. Kids do research around those core values, they present to others, they teach others. So it'll really be across the setting. And we'll be doing an audit of where we have those opportunities now, and where do we need to build them in, and make sure they're consistent across the district.
Ingrid, if I heard you right, it sounded like you may have had that planned before these results.
We did, yeah.
Do these results change anything? Do they accelerate anything? Do you, does it affect the plan that was already in place?
Well, it, it corroborates that we were on the right track, that we were, kind of reflects the perceptions of the staff, of the school staff, saying like, there are definitely pockets of excellence and opportunities that are happening, but we want to make sure that it's a systemic, excuse me, systemic effort that happens not in pockets and not person-dependent, but across, when a school, when a student moves through our system, we can tell you what type of instruction they've had and what the expectations have been through this, through the system. So it, it supports the plans that we already had in place and just makes them, you know, even that much more important to us.
So given the sort of magnitude of the response on this survey, is there anything that this board can do to support your efforts?
That's a great question. I, I think right now, I, I would defer to our teams if, if we have that luxury of time, because our teams are getting together, our leadership teams on May nineteenth. We're going to be talking about different stakeholders that can support us in our efforts. So I would love to bring that question back to them, if that's okay. Because, you know, we would love that.
Can I just ask you a question about some of the results? I mean, obviously, when you do something like this, you hope that it'll give you direction on where you need to focus, so it's wonderful that it gave us some great direction. The one inconsistency that did kind of stick out to me that I was curious about was about the sense of physical security and sort of our, our students on the very low end of it, whereas our parents, it was number one, and the teachers kind of in the middle. So that was the one that really kind of struck me. I know when I was filling it out as a parent myself, I, I feel like my children are very safe at their school. I was curious if you had kind of dug into that a little bit more, or had any thoughts on what might be driving that discrepancy?
And that parameter of sense of physical security, I think when you think of an adult lens, and I, of course, do a lot with school safety, so I think of it as that way. Like, we have, you know, it's not an open school, you have to, you have to be buzzed in. So we kind of think of the physical surroundings and the safety, but the questions for this are really about how students are feeling safe from physical harm. And I, I just mean, like, if a student feels like they're pushed, or they're, you know, we don't, I, for sure, when you talk to principals, I mean, we don't have a lot of physical things going on with kids that's negative, but if they feel like it might happen, then some of that is reported, or some of those lower-level things. So by physical security, that's what the survey's speaking to.
Ingrid, two quick questions. One, when you look at the, the data points across the categories for all three, faculty, parents, students, relatively, they're all fairly close together, even, you know, eight and nine really aren't that much-
Right.
-far off of one and two, except for the last one, except for ten. There's a huge drop-down when it comes to the sense of emotional, social, emotional security. But my question is, A, would you find that on a national level in just about any environment in a public school that, that tends to be kind of one of those areas that is a-
Yeah.
-tough one for people to-
Yes.
-get their heads around?
Yes.
And then two, do we do this every, is there a way to go back and say, has that actually improved? Even though it's not where we want it to be, has it changed at all? Have any of these changed at all in, over prior years, if we've done something similar?
So those, those are great questions. About the sense of social, emotional security, when you look at, the test company does publish median scores for the norm sample, and sense of social, emotional security is toward the bottom for, for students in the norm sample as well. And they also get the, they get increasingly less favorable or less positive as a student gets older. Like, that's a trend of child development and a trend that's seen in the norm sample too. So you will see for lots of, for lots of factors that kids go through in middle or high school, that does decline over time, unfortunately. It's a national, a natural phenomenon. But of course, we want to, we want to stem that tide, you know, we want to be the exception to that. We want kids to grow stronger as they're together in a learning community and come together year after year instead of the opposite. So, you know, that is one of our goals. And then, this is the first time that we've given the CSCI, and a good thing about giving it this year is that the high school also gives it, so we can look at cohorts over time from now on, if this is the instrument that we stay with, that we can look at students from grades three through twelve. So that's, that's a benefit. Prior to this year, we gave the school-wide behavior support survey, and there are some common questions. The dimensions and the parameters aren't exactly apples to apples, but there's enough information where we can look at what are some of the similarities in the reporting of students over time. So that is one of the challenges of our school teams. They'll be looking at the school-wide behavior support. We have all of the questions that went into the survey that made up each dimension, so we're going to go and compare the actual questions that the kids get and, and look at, have there been improvements over time? at, have there been improvements over time? And one, I'd like to note one thing with the teacher surveys. They're incredible results on professional relationships, staff to staff and staff feeling supported by their colleagues. And I think that's a direct effort of our emotional wellness emphasis that we have on our staff to staff and climate and culture and workplace satisfaction. And that definitely was well, well above the national average. So, we feel like we have a lot of conditions that are in a favorable state that'll let us move forward and concentrate on the areas where we need to because things are so strong in other areas where students feel supported by teachers and teachers feel supported by their colleagues. So, I think the stage is really set and so many conditions are favorable that we can springboard and work on these areas that need addressing.
Ingrid, to echo Jeff's point, I'm shocked that this NSCC group doesn't provide the national medians in the report itself. So, if you could provide that to the board members, I think that would be great. And if they provide standard deviations, that'd be great. Also, the report itself keeps talking about the individual reports. Do we have to purchase those or do we have those?
We, we just have those now.
Those could be shared with the board members as well?
Sure. Um, school reports and the norm sample population and...
Well, there, I think it's individual reports by question. So, like, you could grab the, the number three. There's a whole report about that, about that, that they imply at least, right? That they say...
In the individual school one, yeah.
Okay.
This, this is the district report in its entirety, but there are now the school ones.
Okay. Whatever they say, when they, when they talk about individual reports, it'd be great if board members at least could read those if they wanted to. And the last question I have is, do you expect over the next year, maybe in the fall, of coming back and telling us what you think good numbers are and what our targets are for the spring? Or are we going to just say, well, improvement's improvement and we're kind of looking at this year after year? Like, is it going to become like a hard target thing we're going after?
So, we are, since the survey results were just released, we are talking as an administrative group and school groups about the frequency of when this instrument will be given. We do give the Illinois Youth Survey, so, you know, we have to talk about whether we want to alternate that or if this is the tool that we give every year. And, and we, we do want to set some goals with looking at the specific questions within the sub-dimensions and, and move the needle on those. So, we, it will incorporate, each building and the district will be doing an action plan as, as part of our foundations project. And we do want to look at metrics and track our progress. So, we definitely could do that.
The last thing I'll say is, again, to reiterate Jeff's point and my point, we actually have no idea if we're great in all dimensions or horrible in all dimensions. When you rank things one to 10, some category has to be 10th. We still could be doing extremely well in that category, right? And so, I, I, we need to push these guys a little bit to tell us, to give us some understanding of, you know...
If you look at the median scores, we, social emotional security and social or civic learning, both of those ended up as lower ratings for us, but higher than the median score in the norm sample. Any other questions?
Other questions from, or comments from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, sure.
Next on the agenda is the technology report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Mrs. Epke will present us with Learning Without Limits and our technology update.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to join you each spring and share some of the highlights from the school year. I'm Judy Epke, the Director of Instructional Technology and Director of Learning Spaces, and pleased to share some of the highlights. The district tagline and the environment milestone describe a learning context that's ambitious, yet it's attainable. This year, we've made progress toward this milestone. While there's numerous examples of this progress, this presentational feature just some of the great things that happened this year. I feel pictures are worth a thousand words. So, my presentation is, is filled with pictures of our students in our classrooms across all of our buildings. The concepts of STEM and the maker philosophy have become a part of student learning across the district. From middle schoolers in the newly constructed Smart Lab at DPM West to kindergarten classrooms, students solved problems, designed creations, tested solutions and practiced grit and resiliency when things did not turn out as expected. Students had a goal to accomplish and they were assessed on their learning, but if you asked them, they thought they were just having fun. Hands-on student-directed learning has a way of doing that. Materials included robots, popsicle sticks, computers, Legos, soda cans, and almost anything students could think of to help them with their task. Maker activities might be closely related to the existing curriculum, provide new experiences to expand students' knowledge, or present an option for a project to demonstrate their knowledge. Deer Path students are looking forward to their increased access to STEM activities with the installation of the Smart Lab on the east side of Deer Path, scheduled for installation this summer, and the possibilities the new schedule will have to increase the use of these spaces. There's many tools for learning in our students' toolbox. Chromebooks and iPads continue to be the devices used most by our students and teachers. Chromebooks are the daily workhorses for our fourth through eighth grade students, while iPads provide all grade levels, easy access to creation tools for projects and multimedia tasks. Other devices with names like BeBot, Osmo, Cano, MakerBot, and Siftio provide the opportunity for students to interact with technology for problem-solving, iteration, experimentation, coding, and programming. What's most exciting is the collaboration and shared learning that occurs with these devices. This may come in the form of students working together to problem-solve or create a project, but it also may be a student helping a peer troubleshoot a tech issue, or a teacher troubleshoot a tech issue, or providing suggestions for improvement to a design or assignment. The Cube is the premier learning space in our district, but all across the district, other spaces are incorporating the best design features of the Cube. The flexibility of furniture and space to create environments to enhance learning opportunities. Empty classrooms or a corner of the library can become an innovation lab, a student collaboration space, or a comfortable area for a multitude of uses. Classroom teachers are also thinking flexibly to create an agile learning environment, adaptable for a range of activities and student learning preferences. Due to this interest and, due to this interest in learning about and creating comfortable and inspiring learning spaces, a committee of teachers and administrators will begin meeting this spring to define needs, explore options, and frame plans for the transformation of our classrooms and larger spaces across the district. We certainly met our goal of providing the conditions for our students and teachers to become confident and comfortable with the many online assessments administered this year. Many hands and besides, behind-the-scenes preparation, especially from our technicians, helped make the days of testing run as smoothly as possible, and fingers crossed that the next two weeks run the same way. Much credit also goes to our teachers, information literacy instructors, and instructional technology coaches for their work with our students. Their fun and informative tech prep and exposure to the types of questions they would encounter helps students prepare for this new experience. The teachers were placed in the role of proctor for these online assessments and they handled tech issues with calm and grace. These staff members are the district leaders and key team members toward our movement to attaining the environment milestone. Their contributions, along with those of the teachers, have made 2014, 15 an exciting year for learning and Lake Forest 67, a district others aspire to emulate. This year alone, more than 15 districts have visited our schools to learn about our programs and innovative spaces. As next school year approaches, we're making plans to continue our progress toward our milestones and towards fulfillment of our vision.
Thank you very much for that report, for that excellent report. Are there questions or comments from board members?
I've got one. Judy, can you talk to the board a little bit about how many people have come to see the Cube? I receive a surprising number of requests for that, just through my office alone.
We, just recently, I want to say it was last week, we celebrated our two-year anniversary of our community open house for the Cube. And since that time, we've had 35 different, well, I shouldn't say 35 different, 35 visits to the Cube alone. And I say they're not all different because some schools come back more than once. We had, for example, Deerfield 109 came with a group of administrators. And then, last week, we hosted some teachers from District 109. So, sometimes we do have some repeat customers. Word is getting out that some of our elementary schools are doing some innovative things. You know, particularly the, the IRC at Sheridan has done some innovative things the last year or two. And so, people want to come see that space as well. They said, you know, we're really interested in your middle school space, but we're, we're looking at our elementary school. Can you direct us to one of yours? So, I think although we've had 35 in two years, we are still getting requests in and visits to the STEM lab having, having increased as well.
So, one of the things that you'd like to say is that the classroom can be another teacher in the room?
The third teacher, right, right, right.
And one of the things that, that relates to that are, you're working on a committee that's coming up to, to look at what we want to do with our learning spaces and the potential that, that is there. One of the things that, that we see from the Cube is when we do something that is cool and engaging, it not only is good for our kids, but it also brings a lot of interested people in, which is probably good for us as well. Where do you see that committee going and what kind of timeline are you looking at? Because one of the things that we hear is, hey, we want to take the, make the rest of the district look like the Cube. So, what's that process look like?
Well, in talking with Alan Albus, he and I have talked a little bit, and of course, with, with Lauren as well, about, this is not something that, that's done in a year. And, and if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. So, we really want to take a, a long look and, and study, what are our needs? You know, putting, putting paint and buying some, you know, colorful cushions and taking out dust and putting in tables, I think we can aspire to a lot more than that. That might be part of the plan, but there's so many different spaces, whether it's science labs or our, you know, our gymnasiums, as well as, you know, classrooms that have many different purposes, our DSS classrooms, our, our speech classrooms, or, you know, things like that. A kindergarten classroom is going to have, you know, certainly much, much different needs than a, a middle school science lab. So, our goal right now, we have approximately 20 staff members from across the district who have volunteered to be a part of the Transforming Learning Spaces Committee. And part of that is educating ourselves on what does that mean? You know, what does transforming mean? What, what does it look like in all these different environments? And we'll be meeting a couple of times before the end of the year because we want to kind of get some things in our, in our minds and, and some, some juices, creative juices flowing and hopefully do some site visits even this summer. Kind of, you know, there's a lot of great things going on around us. Let's take a look at some of the schools and who have, who've tried to do some of the things that we're looking to do. And then, I would say by mid-year next year, have some, some recommendations on how we might start moving forward with this. I know there, you know, we'd need some money for this, obviously, as well as time to, to have it done. You know, I know the Buildings and Grounds crew is always very busy, but Carol White has been involved in our conversations with us as well. So, you know, we're trying to get input from, obviously, the teachers. At some point, we want to involve the students and, of course, all of our, you know, our, our district-level stakeholders who, who are involved in the actual process of it.
Hey, Judy, if I've missed this, I apologize, but how do we define success for that investment into the Cube? Other than the fact that we've had 35 groups from outside the district come and see a cool space, are there any measures that we use that we look at to say, this has truly made a difference in changing and investing in this, you know, unique learning space?
You know, I had a, one of our visitors last week said to me, asked me if I had any metrics as to that very question. And I said, you know, we didn't create this space to improve achievement. You know, our kids are always really high achievers, but spend a day in the, in, in the Cube with the students, talk to the students, and one of, one of the first exposures our visitors have are student greeters who greet the, the people. They bring them down to the Cube and they, they tour the Cube. And they sit down with us and, and people have an opportunity to ask them questions about how they use the space, what they like about it, what they would change. And one of the things, if you know anything about me, is, is I'm honest and I encourage the students and anybody else who's meeting with these people to be very honest. You know, what, what did we do well and what would we rethink? And it's amazing to hear from the students' perspective about how the use of this space, what it, what it means to them. They, they understand that it's not, it's not the space, it's what the space, what they can do in the space. And, and pretty much that's limitless. And often, we have students come down with teachers, without teachers. And I think just the fact of the way the space is used, and I have, I think, you know, if we really wanted to look at, at change in behavior, I have seen some teachers change their behaviors in the way that they plan projects, in the way that they may come down and use the space. So, I think that, again, I don't have concrete numbers for you, but I would just invite anyone to come spend a day in the Cube or talk to our students and, and to me, that, that's success. And here, the seventh and eighth graders come back and be very sad that they don't have the Cube anymore.
I don't know how you would measure that quantifiably or quantitatively, I just don't see it. But it's more of an energy, a vibe, feedback from kids. And I've heard all positive and I think everybody has, but I, I don't know that you're going to get a quantitative analysis on it, but...
I wasn't necessarily looking for a quantitative analysis. I'm just curious if anyone had a way that they defined whether or not that was a, that investment is reaping benefits. That's all. It could be subjective. I was just curious if there was any type of a way of defining, it was a sizable investment on the part of the district. I would just was curious if someone said, we're going to put $800,000 into this thing. Here's what we hope to gain from it, other than just a cool space. I was just curious.
One, one thing that I think we could easily track, I don't know if students sign in and out, but there, it being a choice before school, Jeff, it's a, if it's a choice to go there or to go elsewhere, there wasn't this option beforehand, how many students are taking advantage? And I know there are a good number taking advantage both before school and after school, the attendance. That's a great number to show.
Yeah, about 100 every morning are, are there. After school, it's a little bit different environment. It's more of a, kind of a quiet, study, working quietly kind of environment. We have anywhere, I'd say from five to 20 after school. And every once in a while, kids will come down on a Friday after school and we say, the Cube's closed on Fridays. Oh, it is. You know, so off they go. So, but I think to me, what, one of the things I like to say about the Cube is if you come to the Cube, it's, it's an amazing space, but without students in it, it's a museum. It's just a really well-designed, beautifully, you know, designed, well-lit space. But I think to see students actually using it, that's our measure of success, whether with, with teachers, without teachers, multiple classes in there. And I think part of the success for me too is, is the flexibility of it. One day, it's set up for a culture fair. The next day, it's set up for the chamber orchestra to play before school. The next day, it's set up for science class to come in and snap QR codes to, on a scavenger hunt.
Judy, you mentioned the disappointment that the seventh and eighth graders feel. I was just curious kind of what the migration path might be for the Haskins Center on the other side.
The, our, our media center co-directors have, have done an amazing job, having lived, they kind of live part-time in the Cube and, and part-time on the Haskins side because they, they share that, the duty of 5'8". And they, both Patty and Leanna have done, they're, the way they describe it is to try to create the zones and the feeling of the Cube without the same kind of furniture. So, so already, we've taken an empty computer lab and created into a student collaboration room with some kind of found furniture, some things that were replaced from the Cube. But you're right, it still needs kind of a major overhaul and, and we're looking at ways to do that as, as soon as we can, as soon as we can get the funding for that and, and kind of put a committee in place for that as well. We're very excited to get started with that. You know, certainly, there's a lot of opportunity for students and on the seven, eight side and that Haskins space, just, just the physical space is amazing. I mean, there isn't much construction that would need to be done to that space. But again, taking a look at the unique needs that seventh and eighth graders might have and the things that we've learned from the Cube, how can we replicate some of the things that we know we want on this side, yet also provide perhaps something that we hadn't thought of, that the students...
yet also provide perhaps something that we hadn't thought of that the students can guide us to?
Other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much for that report. We now move to board committees. The first is the Board Education Committee, Leslie Fisher.
Good evening. Again, the Education Committee met on Tuesday, April 14th at 8:15 a.m., right here at West Campus. First off, as committee chair, I thank the committee members for their time and thoughtfulness, including Beth Clemmison and Jeff Volker. Frequent guest, Mike Borkowski was not with us, but thank you too for your frequent attendance and public participation. And I gave a special thanks to community members Loreen Greve and Sudhar Krishnaswamy, who both end their two-year term as the community members on this committee. We reviewed a couple of important things, some of which have been gone, have been reviewed tonight. The math curriculum, your timing. The math curriculum, grades five through eight review and restructuring. The rationale for doing the math curriculum review and restructuring, I think most of us internally know. But a few points to hit on. There has previously been lack of clarity, as in what is actually being taught in each class. There was a lack of alignment to Common Core standards. Too many freshmen had been enrolling in AAA or AA-TH only to have to drop down. And the data regarding algebra readiness showed that some could actually be moved forward faster while others were simply not prepared to begin. The goal, as we've heard many times over and over again reiterated, whether it's Lauren or by Mike, is to prepare the vast majority of students for calc statistics by senior year. The process that this group embarked upon to restructure the math curriculum was to join together a representative group of fifth through eighth grade math teachers. They examined local data and other local school models. They took into consideration the MAP test at the middle school level, the ACT test at the high school level. And the scores were reviewed by Joe, who is the LFHS Math Department Chair. They also surveyed other local districts' programming. And it showed various interesting facts. In neighboring districts, there is no algebra for all in grades seven and eight. Algebra is typically taught in one year, not two. And then we created courses to align with the Common Core standards, created the placement criteria, and reviewed the resources being used. The highlights of the review and restructuring. Placement will be based on the demonstration of mastery. Students will have access to same concepts just at different times. The entire math sequence, K through 12, has been reviewed. And courses will now be named according to curriculum study, as opposed to being identified by level of student. There will also be multiple ladder opportunities beginning in the summer of 2016. A commitment to providing experiences for all kids to meet their needs and all kids needing to grow. The math informational meeting was held last night at DPM for parents. It was held last night on Monday, April 27th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I believe we had an attendance of over 100, over 100 parents and community members, which we are very happy about, because we wanted to make this clear. And we're so glad that the community is engaged as we move forward. We also, in this committee, went over the update on the Inspiration Block, Year One. I am not going to rain on the parade of Kelly Jackson and Lauren Fagel, who will be presenting this at the May Board of Education meeting. But I will tell you that they use three areas of measurement that they will point out to you. And that Year Two of the program will begin in fall 2015. The whole school at Cherokee will formally transition to Inspiration Block, including grades one and two. We also discussed language arts professional development. Five teachers and one district administrator have been accepted to the Lucy Cawkins Reading and Writing Workshop Institute at Columbia University in New York this summer. This is a very selective program and we are delighted that several of our teacher leaders will be joining in on the program. The remaining language arts teachers will participate in professional development here this summer. The writers workshop portion will be implemented next fall, while the reading workshop will be implemented in the fall of 2016. The next meeting of the Education Committee will be held in the fall of 2015. And I believe Beth Clemmison will be leading that. And that date is to be determined. Any questions?
I have a question. You were talking about math and you referred to a ladder opportunity or I don't know what that is.
Using that term now. So the idea being, if you need a bridge, perhaps it's during the summer, you're sort of on the border. You could probably move forward to the next class. But maybe there were some skills that you didn't master that really should be mastered. There are going to be opportunities provided, which we're calling ladder opportunities, whether it's through the middle school from grade level to grade level or through between grades eight to nine as a ladder to the high school, so that you are set to enter the next course of math.
And that's offered by whom and when? Is it in the summer only or are you talking after school?
It is offered by our schools and I believe it will be held during the summers. That's where we're starting, right? Summer of 2016.
So is it that kid's math teacher that has to identify that and mention it as an opportunity to maybe jump up this ladder? Who's identifying it? I guess though, if a student is close and could really benefit from this, is the student being told about it, is the parent being told about it by the teacher? It's communicated clearly. All right, great.
Thank you, Lauren. Thanks for the question.
I, go ahead. I actually missed the committee meeting, as you said. So I attended last night because I wanted to know what was happening with my kids next year. And I just want to say to Lauren and Susan and everybody who led the meeting last night, I thought it was a great meeting. I thought you guys did a great job. And I think a lot of parents entered that room with a lot of angst because it was a lot of this, you know, is this the secret talk about detracking and all these rumors? And I think some of that angst, certainly we saw. I thought you guys did a really good job answering honestly and directly and trying to explain that this, at times, may seem counterintuitive, but is actually a better way for kids to learn. So anyway, very nice job.
Leslie, since we touched on the Inspiration Block very briefly, and I don't really know of another place to put this. I just wanted to recognize the fourth grade Inspiration Block teachers and instructors at Cherokee. Mike and I were participating, or went as our children participated in a presentation that was done to the City of Lake Forest Energy Forum last Thursday night. The kids shared their learnings from one of their more recent Inspiration Block sections on energy, different types of energy, how Lake Forest could benefit from different renewable energy sources. And the kids did an absolutely phenomenal job. It's on YouTube if you want to go check it out. But I want to recognize the teachers and again, the project-based learning approach that we're using there. I tell you, my son has gotten more out of that section of the day than I ever would have thought. The, the growth in those kids has just been tremendous. And it truly helps bring to life our mission of educating without boundaries and learning without limits. The kids were a great example of that on Thursday night. I just want to recognize the fourth grade teachers. It's on the Cherokee homepage too, great, so thank you to them.
One of the cool things about that night is we have any number of events that are planned for the kids. Okay, the kids did this cool thing, let's have a family share night and present it. And that's wonderful and appropriate. What Jeff's referring to, the City of Lake Forest had planned this energy forum through this collaboration group that Lauren, among others, are on. Before and separate from what was going on in the Inspiration Block, they had the energy forum and had absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with what the kids were doing. When the kids presented to the parents effectively, they also invited into the classroom a handful of city officials. And one of the city officials said, this is cool stuff, this is great stuff. You should come present at our city meeting. So it wasn't that, let's plan this for the kids. This was a real city meeting that the kids were actually asked to come to. So I just thought that was really cool. I agree with everything you said.
And thank you both for sharing.
Other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Leslie, and for four great years running that, running the Education Committee. Next is Board Finance and Operation Committee, Rick Schuler.
The committee did not meet in the last month.
Thank you very much, but thank you for the great job you've done running the, running the committee the past two years. Next is Policy Committee, and I understand the report this evening will be from Mr. Jeff Volker.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The Policy Committee met last Thursday, April 23rd, here at the West Campus. This was our first meeting in three or so months. So we had some very meaty topics to cover and I'll try and get through these as quickly as I can. Our first topic dealt with the development of a employee social media policy. This discussion was led by Cornelius Staboz and Judy Epke, who did a wonderful job of fleshing out a draft policy relative to giving employees better direction and guidelines on what is and is not acceptable relative to social media use. One of the benefits of the policy is it also spells out district expectations, both in terms of professional social media use, in terms of accounts that are made up for teams, teacher websites and so forth, as well as expectations around personal social media use. This is a good example of the Policy Committee trying to be a bit proactive relative to understanding where we could get ourselves into trouble relative to social media and the use of social media. And Judy and Cornelius did a wonderful job of helping to really provide some structure around that. During the discussion, we did identify a need for a gatekeeper of the policy. In other words, as people are setting up new social media accounts, someone needs to be making sure that they're being done right, the right proper, the proper levels of privacy are being set and so forth. And we identified that Judy or the Director of Instructional Technology would be the person who would be that gatekeeper and that will be incorporated into the policy. There was also discussion about the brand of District 67 and who owns monitoring that that brand is properly being communicated through social media. And questions came up relative, should the Communications Department be engaged in this policy as a result as well? So great discussions. We did determine that this policy is not a redundant policy to what's already in place. The Employee Acceptable Use Agreement for IT Systems, did I get that right, Judy? Which is a document that employees are asked to sign upon joining the district. That deals really just with the use of electronics. We felt that the social media policy does indeed address an area that had not yet been covered, so that's good. And in terms of next steps, Cornelius and Judy are going to take away the input from our discussions, revise the policy further and then take it to our legal counsel for them to review. And I'm happy to say that that's already been done, so thank you for doing that. And there will most likely be a Policy Committee meeting in May when the new board's in place and we'll have another opportunity to review that revised policy. So we'll hopefully be in a position to bring that to the board in May for a first reading. I do, as I said earlier, do want to point out that Judy and Cornelius did a fantastic job in kind of creating this from nothing and at the request of the Policy Committee. So thank you guys for doing that. Our second topic dealt with permissive transfers. I know as we all are aware, permissive transfer requests have been somewhat of an issue over the last year or two. The Policy Committee felt there was a need to clarify policy relative to how that process works, making sure that parents felt comfortable that it was being done in a formalized, clear way, that they understood what the requirements were to make a permissive transfer request. So we worked with Dr. Wilcox relative to understanding what's out there that we could utilize and how in detail the policy needed to be. The good news is we do have a permissive transfer request and approval process that is in place. It's on the website. It clearly articulates the timing that a request needs to be made, the process that it will be going through, when you can expect an answer. We also articulate that anyone who is given or granted a permissive transfer request is allowed to stay at that school, assuming any unforeseen circumstances relative to population. But that's another thing I know parents have asked about, so that's more formally recognized. The question then was, how do we revise the verbiage of the policy to make sure that people can go to the policy manual, see that that's in there? So we're working on that. We weren't able to finalize that language, but we'll hopefully have that by the next board meeting as well for a first reading. So expect Policy 730 to be up for a first reading at the next policy meeting, or at the next board meeting. Our third topic dealt with Community Relations Policy, 895. In looking through the policy manual, it was discovered that that policy, which deals with parental involvement in the schools, contained a section called Bring Your Parent to School Day, which is actually a policy that says parents are invited on the first Monday of every October to come to school with their kids and attend class. And that was news to all of us. I didn't go. And since that was not something that the district did last year, or I think is really all that interested in doing in years' future, we felt that was something that needed to be eliminated from the policy. So tonight we'll actually be voting on a first reading for the elimination of that section of Policy 895. So that'll give you a little bit more detail. Yeah, kind of weird. Lastly, we talked about the board's role in approving and adopting curriculum. If you go to Policy 220, which is one of the, talks about the major powers and responsibilities of the Board of Education, it clearly articulates that one of the board's key responsibilities is to approve curriculum, textbooks and educational services. However, in our Policy 640, it articulates that it's the administration's responsibility to adopt curriculum and merely the report to the board as to what they're doing. So that, you know, issue around not being aligned with those two policies led us to say, what is really the responsibility of the board in terms of approving curriculum? And how far down should we be going in that approval? So Lauren Fagel and I met prior to the Policy Committee meeting, talked about that. And then Lauren presented to the committee a great way of defining curriculum that I think we're going to be able to build off of, which is curriculum is defined or made up of four individual parts. Standards, assessments, instructional strategies and materials. And some of those things, frankly, the board can't affect. I don't know that we can approve or disapprove standards. The Common Core is coming down from the state, so there's a limited ability to truly affect that. Same goes with assessments. Some of the assessments that we have are mandated by the state. Some are not, maybe we can have some input on that. But when it comes to instructional strategies and materials, the board needs to have a say and an approval level. The question is how far down? Does it go down to, say, Lucy Cawkins, which we did approve? Or Bridges, which I don't think we did approve? So Lauren has agreed to kind of take that away, think through that a little bit better and come back with some more clear expectations and definitions of what the board should be approving relative to curriculum. So again, we hope to have more information on that by the May meeting and more information for the May board meeting. Last but not least, I just wanted to update everyone that the administration is putting together what we're calling an Administrative Procedures Repository. Right now, Eileen has put together Google Docs that is intended to incorporate a lot of these policies and procedures that we are developing in support of policy. For example, the permissive transfer request procedure will be resident in this repository. It's something the entire staff or the administrative staff has access to. And over time, hopefully others would have access to it as well. So if you have a question on, how do I do this or what form do I need to fill out, it would be available. So thanks to Eileen and all the administration for putting that together. And if there's any processes or forms out there you need to add, please get those added in. That's it. The meeting adjourned at 9:30 and we were done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, Jeff, for that report. Are there questions or comments from board members? Keeping in mind that Dr. Lemke of Price Waterhouse Coopers is timing each report.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lemke. I have a question and a comment. Comment first. This Policy Committee, which you have only been at the helm of for the past year, and, but, well, you're at the helm, but you both have been doing this for about a year now. And I think it's very evident this is something that needed to happen. And I'm very glad to see this work being done by both of you. One thing I wanted to ask, it's very clear when we change things, because we vote on the policies and we are privy to what is in that newer policy, being board members. How will the staff, for instance, be notified if this, once this change goes through with the technology or the social media? How are they notified of the new policy so they can be on the same page?
I mean, we would work through Judy and Cornelius to basically, you know, allow people to understand what the new policy is. It would clearly be articulated before the next school year relative to what is allowed, what is not allowed. I don't believe there would be any grandfathering. It would be no, if this isn't meeting expectations, it needs to be changed. But it would be a discussion that would be had with all of the staff, at least prior to the new school year.
Right, because of the...
So, so one of the things we talked about on that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we said there were sort of two parts. Initially, right now, because it's such a significant change, going from not a lot to something substantial, I think Judy and her team said they'd probably go to staff meetings and actually cover it in person, and then on a going-forward basis, every year, there's a number of things that the staff has to sign and acknowledge, and this would become part of that. Is that, got that right?
And of course, we would, we would work with new teachers to explain this policy, because it is something we don't want them to miss. And yes, you're right, we would, the staff, we could, you know, talk about anything that we need to, but pretty much it would just be kind of a checkmark that I acknowledge, just, yeah, each year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Volker. Next is the Compensation Committee, Rob Lemke.
Compensation Committee has that met.
That shortened the average length of report for the evening, so that the next one can be longer. We now move to Liaison Reports. North Suburban Special Education District, Mike Burkowski.
The NSSCD Governing Board met on April 8th. There's a couple of quick items to mention that this board might find interesting. The NSSCD Superintendent has begun what he hopes to be quarterly meetings, quarterly group superintendent meetings, with all member district superintendents being invited. His purpose for this is to have the superintendents have more input in resolving issues, so I encourage our superintendent or his designee to participate in those. The NSSCD Finance Committee is looking for new members, including both board members as well as business officials from member districts. These member, these meetings typically occurred every few months during the school day, and so I would encourage our business officials, looking at Alan and Jen, to consider joining that committee. That committee is an excellent place and venue to drive some of the changes that we're looking for, so that may be something to consider. A second draft budget was presented. The budget was balanced, and NSSCD finances seem to be in appropriate shape. The NSSCD Board did approve new language for the Articles of Incorporation that I previously discussed. The result of that is that the Governing Board and the former Executive Committee have officially been melded into one group with the purpose of increasing transparency. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, the Search Committee gave an update, and the Search Committee is moving ahead with a robust search process to identify the next NSSCD Superintendent. They're in the process of retaining a search firm, and they hope to have the new NSSCD Superintendent identified by next spring, as the current superintendent's resignation occurs in June of 2016. That concludes the NSSCD Board Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burkowski. Next up is the Illinois Association of School Boards, and Ed Redd, Bill Anderson. I have stress dreams about this report, you know, so. There is no report this month, but I will be happy to entertain questions or comments from board members. Hearing none. Next up is the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Leslie Fisher.
First, I would like to say, I forgot, I'd be remiss, I forgot to thank you for your service on the Illinois Association of School Boards, Ed Redd, over the past several years.
I don't know how that slipped your mind.
The CCC did not meet this past month. We will be meeting again on Thursday, May 7th.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Spirit of 67, Leslie Fisher.
The Spirit of 67 Exec Board met on April 14th, right here in the District Office Boardroom, at 9:15 a.m. A couple of quick announcements. The Fall Barn Dance, which will be in lieu of the Fall Luncheon, which I actually announced at the last, at our last board meeting, has been changed to be held. The new date will be Saturday, October 17th. Desire to involve spouses again. It is being held in a great location, and we encourage everyone to come out and support our schools. Home Tour is Thursday, May 7th, and this is another opportunity to support our schools and to volunteer, and Board of Education, Board of Education members are specifically encouraged to volunteer at homes. We have one incoming Board of Education member in the audience tonight, and I'm certain she'll be there as well. The Grants Day was held on Wednesday, April 15th. The committee traveled to each school, awarding 20 grants, surprisingly, to staff and students. The grants awarded this year totaled $209,000, $305, rather. Yep. Wonderful. And the culmination of the presentation occurred at DPM. Mike was there, and I don't know if anyone else was there, but the presentation of the Sports Court Grant. The entire blacktop that you see adjacent to the rec center at DPM will this summer be converted to a sports court, several basketball hoops, several areas for hopscotch and additional play. This grant was spearheaded by the DPM Student Council, and one thing to note, a very great interest on this grant was that the school actually partnered with the city, so it will be, of course, open to the public to enjoy as well. I have also, I'm just going to pass this around. These are the Spirit Grants. If you want to take a quick look, there's 20 of them. You can go ahead and pass them around and see what great things are coming to our schools on behalf of the Spirit and the generosity of our community. In addition, Molly Sarver was voted in as the incoming Spirit President, so we thank Martha Zeeman for her service, and we welcome Molly, who actually did, in fact, chair the Grants Committee this year. The Spirit Board will reconvene on May 12th at 9:15, right here. Thank you.
I do have one comment, and it comes from a prominent member of the Spirit, but they were so appreciative of your input and your involvement and your engagement relative to this whole grant process, and having served on another foundation board and seeing where board input into that process is invaluable relative to driving where we can be getting grants, how we can be asking for grants, so thank you for your service, and that, it's made a big difference.
For saying it, and I really, really enjoyed every minute of it. It's a fantastic cause, a fantastic group, and just wonderful. Thanks, Jeff.
Other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much. Thanks very much, Leslie. Next is APT, Leslie.
Okay, this is it. The APT Exec Board met on Wednesday, April 15th, at 9 a.m. at the Lake Forest High School Business Incubator. Principal Barry Rogers was the guest speaker, and he shared the business incubator proj, business incubator projects, and he also answered a variety of questions from the exec board, both broad, including what are some innovative practices, and specific, including the various class offerings at the high school. Mike Simic also joined us, and he discussed the principal searches and discussed the upcoming math meeting that has already taken place. Finally, Janice Patterson, District 67 Communications and Web Manager, presented and reviewed the APT websites, and of course, Ann Whipple was there to help with every question under the sun. On Wednesday, April 22nd, I also attended the Cherokee APT meeting. I was invited by President Mary Kay Hanlon, and they are an involved group. I see a member in the audience tonight who was there with me, and this building has been through a lot of change, and we had a very candid and very positive conversation, and I was really glad to be a part of it. The next meeting for the APT will be the Annual Old Board, New Board Luncheon on Wednesday, May 13th, at 11 a.m. at Authentico, and I will be attending on behalf of our board.
Thanks very much, Leslie. We now move to action items. The first is approval of the Sheridan-Cherokee Tile Abatement Project. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I will defer to Jen Hermes on this.
Only because I get to steal a little of Alan and Carol's thunder, but I think, as was briefly mentioned earlier, we are looking to take some of the renovations and changes that we instituted at Everett and some of those other themes that you're seeing in our buildings and, and kind of continue them, and this is a continuation of the floor project, very similar to the look of Everett, in bringing that to Cherokee this summer and to Sheridan as well. It was bid with an alternate to kind of address that front matting, you know, walk-on, walk-off area as well. Both of these buildings did come in under the projected amount on our five-year projection, and we recommend their approval. Vortex, who is a little bid, is an outstanding company, and they've done a lot of great work for us in many other school districts.
Thank you. Jen, are there questions or comments on this project from board members?
So just to clarify, this is going to take these other two buildings more in that same design look, so not traditional tile, more of that wood look that we talked about last year for Everett?
I believe so. I think that was the understanding. I don't think, it's not really wood, but I don't know what you call that particular product, but yes, the intent is it'd be very, very similar to Everett.
Well, I remember we had a whole design meeting about it. It had, you know, natural, it was supposed to look more natural, earth tone, kind of.
The key element in this process for both Cherokee and Sheridan, more Cherokee than Sheridan at this point, because the carpet in Cherokee is actually older, is the removal of, of the carpet, and Everett was sort of a, a great example of what happens when you have carpet and a lot of geese, and one, one contributes to, one contributes to the other out on the playground, and so the removal of the, of the carpet will really change frankly how the building smells when you walk into it. It really does make a big difference. It's somewhat louder, but they have carpets that they put in, rugs that can be rolled up and cleaned, whereas the carpet has been there for 12, 15 years. I mean, it's been there for a long time.
It's a lot cheaper than wood. It looks like wood. It's clean, easy to clean, no smells, doesn't, you know, mold issues that we had at Cherokee, gone. It's a lot easier. It's a good, and it's going to last longer.
Will this affect the goose population?
Any other questions from board members? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the Sheridan-Cherokee Tile Abatement Project?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of workers' compensation insurance contract. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I will again turn to Mrs. Hermes.
Okay, this is just an annual renewal. We do this every year, typically around this time of year. We are looking at an overall estimated 10.3% increase. 5% of that is a true rate increase due to some adverse losses, and the other is, of course, because our overall payroll goes up, because our rate is a percentage of payroll. That is audited on the, on the back end as well, but is estimated to be 10.3%.
Thank you very much. Additional details been provided to board members. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve a workers' compensation insurance contract?
So moved.
Second.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Aye. Oh, I didn't hear it. I probably, okay, sorry, sorry. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke? Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is approval of amended final 2014-2015 school calendar. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The only adjustment to the calendar that is contained in this final calendar approval is the change to the last day of school being Tuesday, June 9th, and I recommend its approval as presented.
Questions or comments from board members?
This final half-day is in honor of Rick Schuler.
I think it should be called Rick Schuler Day.
So moved.
Okay.
Is it a half-day or full-day?
It's a, it's a half-day. Yeah. It's more than an hour. It is four hours, three hours? By the way, I have done a full day of school on the last day of school, and this is a half-day that you want to be a half-day.
May I have a motion to approve the, for the final approval of the, approval of amended final 2014...
Just one thing, just for clarification. So the last day of school, three emergency days used, is Tuesday, June 9th. That's if three emergency days are used.
They have been.
I'm good with that.
Okay, could I have a motion to appro, approval of amended final, could I have a motion to approve the amended final 2014-2015 school calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is approval of the CSCI as an alternative to the Illinois Five Essentials Survey. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. This is a perfunctory thing for the board to, for the board to approve, requires board approval and also the consent of the LFEA. This is to substitute the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory that Dr. Weimer presented tonight for the Illinois Five Essentials as a survey tool to measure school climate, and I recommend its approval as presented.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members?
So prior to this approval, the work that we did was in addition to the Illinois Five Survey, or?
We, we had schools, when the Illinois Five Essentials first came out, it was mandatory that all districts participate in it, and then after a significant amount of feedback from a variety of districts saying, "Look, we already have a tool that we use, and, and it's a good tool." There were a number of different things. A menu that was then developed. You can pick from one of these to assess your school climate. It all, all of it goes on the Illinois School Report Card, whether you use one tool or the other, and we felt that the CSCI was a much better tool for our uses, and chose that one. And because we, we've, you don't want to have survey after survey, so if the board doesn't approve this, then we have to, we have to pick one, and we don't want to have two.
Other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve CSCI as an alternative to the Illinois Five Essentials Survey?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, approval of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, Technology, and Assessment, a delineating agreement. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate the board's forbearance in allowing Mr. Rogers, who very much wanted to attend tonight's meeting but had a very important family engagement. Otherwise, he would very much like to be here. This is the Enabling Agreement, which is District 67's agreement to share in the cost of a shared service employee. In this instance, the contract is held by District 115, and the Enabling Agreement is the agreement of the 67 Board to agree in sharing the cost and then the services of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Technology, and Assessment. That is, as of June 30th, that was Lauren Fagel, and as of July 1st would be Barry Rogers. I recommend its approval as presented.
Questions or comments from board members? I just have one question. It looks like on the agreement, it's referred to as an Enabling Agreement, and on the agenda, it's referred to as a delineating agreement. Could you please explain the difference? Or if not, could someone?
I need to delineate the difference between Enabling and delineation. It is the Enabling Agreement, as I understand it. It is the enabling agreement, as I understand.
Well, okay, I'm going to call it an enabling agreement when we pass it, but that won't be on the agenda, but it'll be okay. Other questions or comments from board members? I think I should call it the delineating agreement. I mean, what we're passing is not what's on the agenda. Delineating, enabling?
Call it the delineating agreement, because that's what's on the agenda, and then if the attorneys have a problem with it, also known as, there you go.
Could I have a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, Technology, and Assessment delineating slash enabling, delineating agreement, also known as the enabling agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of release of executive session minutes from September 2014 to February Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the release of executive session minutes from September 2014 to February 2015?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of policy 8.95, first reading. Would a member of the policy committee like to address this?
I recommend we approve the first reading of this policy.
I think, thank you, may I have a...
Sure. Just to provide additional clarification, based on what was reported earlier, all that, all that's being done here is removing the section that was called Bring Your Parent to School Day. The rest of the policy remains as was currently written. As background, that was incorporated last year through a press recommendation, and we have decided it needs to be stricken. And as Mr. Burkowski pointed out, we recommend a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Falker. Could I have a motion to approve policy 8.95, first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Approval of human resources items. These have been provided to board members. Are there questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call vote, thank you, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements from March 2015, approval of designation of depositories minutes of a public hearing, March 24, 2015, minutes of a regular meeting, March 24, 2015, minutes of an executive session, March 24, 2015, minutes of an executive session, April 13, 2015, and disposal of audio recordings, October 22, 2013. Are there any things in the, items in the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for further discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. FOIA requests, there are two FOIA requests from Ms. Nancy Thorne, and one from Mr. David Giuliani. Announcements, Monday, May 4 is the Old Board, New Board meeting at 6 o'clock, right here. Thursday, May 7, Spirit of 67 Home Tour, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. Friday, May 22, School Improvement Day, one-half day for students. Monday, May 25, Memorial Day, no school. Tuesday, May 26, Board of Education meeting, 7 p.m., right here. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Anderson, I wanted to add one comment about the upcoming events on May 4, the Old Board, New Board. There will be a reception at 5 o'clock here in this room.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? None? Could I have, next item is adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?